This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, both here in person and online. This is the East Hampton Public Hearing for our municipal aggregation program, which is in the process of being finalized, based on the work that we've done so far and the public input that we're getting throughout this one-month-long period. My name's Jamie Pochette. I'm the Chair of the East Hampton Energy Advisory Committee. We are the committee that advises the mayor on energy-related matters. We've been spearheading this municipal aggregation effort over the past few years. I'm joined here today by folks from Good Energy, who is our consultant on this program. This is Allison McNeil and Rafida Rahman. They have been working on the plan itself and as well as the public distribution of that, getting the plan website up and running, which we rolled out at the beginning of this process a couple of weeks ago. What we are here to do today is to have them give a quick presentation overview of what we've done so far, where we're at, what the plan entails at this point. At that point, we will open things up for public comment. Anybody in person or online that would like to do that will be able to offer those. There is still opportunity to provide public comment through July 6th via the program website, which is easthamptoncommunityelectricity.com. So tonight is not the only chance for that public input. Do not feel like you have to, but of course, we welcome any comment, any questions, input that we would like to get or that anyone would like to give. So a quick thanks to the mayor and the mayor's office for their help getting us to this point as well, as well as the city council, who did pass a resolution back, I think, in 2022, 2023, giving us the go-ahead to move forward with this process. We have a few more steps in the process outside of this. We have a meeting with DOER coming up this week to help us get some input from their perspective on this. That is a requirement before we are allowed to submit our plan to DPU for final approval. At the end of the public review period, we will then take all that, potentially package all that up, start getting that to DPU. They have a whole review process that we'll go through. Once they potentially have approved it, then we will be able to move forward with aggregation. But I don't want to step on the toes of the presentation that's coming up here. They'll go through all that, and we'll be happy to talk more about that here in a little bit. So with that said, let me turn it over to... Let me get this right thing open here. Not used to having to run this large, like, hybrid sort of thing, so bear with me here. Normally, our committee meetings are much smaller than this.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rafida Rahman, and I work as the Sustainability and Engagement Strategist at Good Energy. And I've been working with Jamie and my other colleague, Patrick, who's in here to develop this aggregation plan. And this is my colleague, Allison McNeil. She's the Client Success Specialist, and she will also be the Project Manager for East Hampton. So after the project gets launched, any communications that needs to be done about the program, and if you can get it through her. And we have all our contact details here at the presentation that you will be seeing shortly. So thank you so much for joining us today. So the first half of the presentation will be done by Allison, and then I'll take over. So thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Okay. Hope everybody can see the plan well enough. We do have it up here. Folks online, I am sharing it in the meet, so if you hopefully be able to see everything adequately.
Yep, and we can get these posted as well. You got slides?
Right on.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us tonight. My name is Allison McNeil. As Rafida said, I'm one of the client specialists on the Good Energy team. We are the consultant to the city on this program. So we're here tonight as an extension of the city to talk with you about this. This city authorized this in 2022, so it's been a long time coming. We're super excited to get to this point. So for tonight's public hearing, we'll walk through the basics of the program, and then I'll let Rafida get into some actual plan details. Then we'll open up to comments and questions in here and online as well. We can go on to the next slide. Perfect. So we'll go on to detail and all the parts here in just a minute. But at a glance, this program is an aggregation. It's a municipal aggregation program. Essentially, that just means the city will select a supplier who will provide alternative electricity to all of our residents and businesses here in East Hampton. In this program, Eversource is going to continue with all of their delivery services that they currently offer. That's things like billing, maintaining wires and poles, responding to storm outages. So just the supply portion of your bill will be what changes.
Next.
Thank you. So there are already 170 aggregation programs like this in Massachusetts. Some of your neighbors, Belcher Town and Hadley, are two of them. Belcher Town actually just launched this month, but we have this little graph here. It's a little difficult to see, but the green is municipal aggregation customers, and these are the whole customer base. So for the state of Massachusetts, now we actually see that more residential customers are served by municipal aggregations than by the utility, the basic service utility. So very popular program. It's all over the state, so really excited to be bringing it to East Hampton. So the main goal of these programs really is to offer new alternative electricity supply. They can provide more renewable energy, but mainly, they can provide stability. So these prices will be locked in at a rate for a set pricing term, whereas the utility will change every six months on their cycles. And we'd also like to include some greener options as well for you all. A couple of things to note about these programs is that they do not affect benefits like low-income discounts, budget billing. If you have solar and you use net metering, none of those benefits are impacted. So it's really just the supply side.
Let's see. How do I get this to move now? There we go.
Oh, perfect. Thanks. Awesome. So before we dive into the details, I just want to take a moment to look at the work that we've done to get to this point here. So earlier in June, the mayor's office released this draft plan for all of you to review, give your comments. We're still in this review period, so you have until July 6th, as Jamie said, to submit any comments, as well as whatever you say tonight, we'll have input. We'll also be meeting... Oh, actually, that's a bit of our look forward, so I'll stay here. But this meeting was also publicized. We had a press release go out. We want to make sure that people know where to come, bring their comments. We do have this posted online, as well as hard copies for you all to review the actual plan as well. Now then, looking forward, tonight, we'll do the public hearing, and then you'll have until July 6th, submit your comments and questions. We'll also meet with the Department of Energy Resources to get their feedback and consult with them on our plan. And after all of this closes July 6th, then we get the DOER's feedback. We will take this feedback, and the mayor will have an opportunity to approve this plan and give it to DPU for their review. Once we actually get DPU approval, then we'll have the opportunity, if we want to, to go out and select a supplier for the program.
Yeah, next slide, please. So basically, let's dive into some of the plan details. So let's start with the goals of the East Hampton Community Electricity Program. So first, the first goal is basically kind of leveraging bulk purchasing power to secure more competitive rates and favorable terms for conditions of the community and promote and utilize clean energy sources and broaden consumer options for electricity supply choices. So these three are the main goals of the Community Electricity Program. So let's dive in into the next slide, please. Yes. So the program rollout, as Allison mentioned, that at program launch, East Hampton Community Electricity will only replace Eversource as the city's new default electricity supply. The delivery will still be done by Eversource. And just to keep some things in mind, that East Hampton residents who are already with Eversource Basic Service will be eligible for automatic enrollment. And East and residents who have a third-party supplier, they can choose to opt into the program. However, we recommend that residents who have third-party suppliers, they contact their current suppliers before opting into the program to see if they have any termination fees or if there are any other rules that they need to be aware of, just to be on the safe side. And there's also options for all residents that if they don't want to be part of the program, they can choose to opt out. As you, as already mentioned, that Eversource will continue to handle billing and maintenance, and this does not affect solar, net metering, or any low-income discount rates. And we actually got a question from, you know, one of the residents before the public hearing that, you know, like, if, you know, the program starts, is there going to be, like, more discount on the supply side after they join into the program? So the key is that low-income discount applies to the entire bill, both supply and delivery, and this remains unchanged with the Community Electricity Program. So if customers joining the program, you know, after they join the program, they would not incur any additional costs as they would receive a 42% discount on supply because that's the percentage, that's the discount that Eversource gives to low-income residents. Regarding the program rollout, this is also important to mention that we do offer a 30-day opt-out period where we kind of give out educational materials before the program launches. So people get to read more about the program, hear more about the program, and then make their own decision whether or not they would like to be in the program or not. Yeah, next slide, please. Okay, yeah. So these are the three products. So East Hampton kind of offers multiple products, but one of them will be the default, known as the East Hampton Standard. And this default product was basically designed as a win-win, both for environmental and economic reasons. So our goal is that this product kind of provides savings through competitive prices, but is also cleaner and has more renewable energy than the utility. And this kind of a default product is very common amongst our clients, like Allison mentioned, that Hadley and Belcher Town also has this kind of default. And but we also have optional products. So for East Hampton Standard, we have, we offer like a 10% more renewable energy than the state standards. But if some people want to choose a more cost-effective option and they don't want more renewable energy, they can always opt down to East Hampton Basic to maximize potential savings. But for some residents who are very environmentally conscious and who would want a significant additional renewable energy and wouldn't mind paying the higher-priced premium, they can also opt up to the East Hampton Plus. So to summarize, the city is creating a program where residents and businesses can choose their electricity supply from different options. And like we meant, like I mentioned earlier, they can automatically join, but can also opt out or choose a different plan. And the program offers a standard option and other choices with different renewable energy levels and prices. And eligible customers will receive a notice with details about the plans before the program starts, and people can join or leave the program anytime without any penalty. The program is still being developed and expected to start, hopefully, by early 2025. And so let's start the public hearing. And if anybody has any questions, they're all welcome. And in case you want more information, please check the website. It's theeasthamptoncommunityelectricity.com. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Allison and Rafida. So we are now here, available for the public comment period. Anyone that's here in person that would like to speak can feel free to step over to the podium over there and use the microphone so that you can be captured here. Anyone that is online that would like to speak, feel free to raise your hand, and I will do my best to get you turned on so that we can have you ask your question live here as well. We have somebody at the microphone. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. My apologies for being late. One, right off the bat, I need to express a lot of gratitude to the Energy Advisory Committee, but especially our chair. I don't know how long you and I have been going back and forth with email. I was very dubious. I trust him as a person, but was like, this doesn't make sense. And people, and very patiently, you made the case. You made a great partnership with Good Energy. Our procurement and financial team has done a lot of due diligence and taken a look at what you've done for other communities and what you'll do for East Hampton. And, you know, again, to the credit to the chair, also members of the committee for walking through what is a much more difficult and arduous process than it really needs to be. Thank you, DPU. But this also, this plan really goes, you know, I'm tremendously in favor, and the timing really is fantastic because it folds into that Climate Action Plan that is about to come out. But also, the relief it gives our citizens in an increasingly difficult market. You know, you turn on your lights, you get an energy bill, and then you were done. With the different levels of supply and demand and mix of the sources and whatnot, it's very confusing. And candidly, it was what caused my suspicion about that, you know, handing it over to a third party. But the AG has a great paper around individuals that are trying to make the best decision and lose track of it, ends up costing more. And again, the Advisory Commission just kept coming back with, like, this is why every single step. That said, it goes part and parcel with being a climate leader. This really helps the city overall in our climate leadership application. We want to be in the first cohort. And this would allow us to access money for maybe community solar, but also for different options for folks to access aggregation, whether that be for EV chargers or EV cars and whatnot. So it's a, it is a plan and a program that I am wholeheartedly endorse and I'm glad to see happening. The impact, it doesn't always follow the logical connections of the impact, but what I just mentioned are just some of them. And I know that there's more. Our Municipal Vulnerability Project, like, to have this in place that goes right on our next three grants that begin to redo Parson and Ferry Street, which you two probably don't know, but anybody from East Hampton definitely knows that intersection and where the water goes. So thank you, Jamie, and your team for your diligence and patience with me. And also, the Good Energy team, you've really walked us through. In the beginning, I had so many small questions and great answers to each one of them. So, yeah, wrote a letter in favor, called DPU. Nobody answered, but I feel good for the beginning of 2025. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor. Just say a few things to follow up on that. The number-one DPU process has been very arduous over the years for a lot of communities. A lot of communities waited, even once they got through this whole part of the process, for years and years for DPU to review and approve. In some cases, I heard as many as three years, things were sitting in queue. The current leadership at the state level has pushed DPU to refine that and speed it up. So they have shown a lot of, a lot more effort now to get things through the process faster. We do anticipate that once we get there, it will be, you know, maybe 180-day period versus...
120.
120. Okay, thank you.
It's not finalized yet.
Right.
The guidelines are still being developed to be finalized. But currently, where it is, it's been said that 120 days is what it should take to DPU to finalize.
Okay. So we're optimistic that we'll be able to get through that part of the process faster than we've gotten through the parts to this point. And I appreciate the kind words from the mayor. Again, my, having the rest of my committee involved has been really helpful. You know, I've been slow at times. It's all, it's all a team effort to get all this stuff done. To the point, some of the points about aggregation, I'll just speak, you know, from my perspective as an East Hampton resident, as the chair of the committee. It does dovetail really nicely with the Climate Action Plan and some of the goals that the city has. It allows us to support cleaner energy. It allows us to, of course, aggregate the buying power of all of our residents and businesses to hopefully alleviate some of that fluctuation that we see in the Eversource rates, which now, you know, change twice per year and never, ever go down over long periods of time. So being able to aggregate that buying power, bring it somewhere and get a contract in place for multiple years, hopefully, allows us to give a little more cost certainty to residents. It allows us to, you know, again, savings cannot be guaranteed in the program because you never know what's going to happen in a six-month market. But, you know, we like the odds and we like what we've seen in other municipalities to save their residents money over the long term. Lots of municipalities have been able to do that, have been able to document the savings that they've generated for residents, even while supplying a higher level of renewable energy. You know, even sometimes, the 100% level can work out to be cheaper than the Eversource base rate. It just, you know, it all depends on market conditions. It depends on the bids that you get and the suppliers that you end up working with. So the good news for us is that we're not locked into anything, right? Until we sign a contract, we can say, we can walk away and say, yeah, you know what? These rates aren't what we want. They don't look like they're going to be competitive. You know, we're only, they're only giving it to us for a year. We're going to wait and come back around. So we don't have to do anything, right? This just gives us the option. And if we then look at something, and again, we've got lots of good people on the consultant side, as well as here in our city, to put eyes on this and to think, you know, does this make sense? Is this, you know, is this the right time? Is this the right, the right program? Is this the right contract for us to lock in? So again, the process here just gives us the chance to do it. It does not commit us to doing anything. Anybody else have any comments, questions they'd like to bring up?
Hello? Donald Torrey from Seventeenth School Street, East Hampton. And so Eversource is going to still supply everything and take care of the lines?
That's correct.
Now, how do they make up the loss from not supplying the electricity?
I can take a stab at it. Yeah, sure. Oh, sorry. So Eversource, the utilities actually can't make...
I can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. The utilities can't actually make a dime off of their supply. It's a regulated market for them. They can make as much as they want off of the delivery, but they can't actually make money off the supply. So they don't care who you choose as the supplier, whether it's third-party through an aggregation. So they won't be making any of that up. They can't make money on that half anyhow. But they'll still be delivering, doing all the delivery services. So that's billing, wire and pole maintenance, storm outage response. Everything except supplying your electricity.
Okay, now, I know they try to, they're trying to do away with natural gas. Wouldn't that be a lot cheaper to generate electricity than everything you're talking about? And then lower the supply costs?
Sure. Oh, sorry. Did you...
No, no, go ahead.
Yeah. So the options that Rafida went through, some of the product options, we tried to kind of capture the goal of these programs in those three, where our default has a little extra renewables. Just so everyone knows, the state standard applies to all generators, so all suppliers. So the Massachusetts state standard for 2023 and 2024 is 62 and 63%. So regardless of who's making it...
2023 was 59.
Oh, 59, thanks.
Yeah, 24 is 62.
So 62% of whoever is making this electricity has to come from these renewable energy resources. It's broken down in a couple of different ways, but regardless of whoever's supplying it, there has to be some renewables in there. That's how the state is kind of using these standards to increase the growth and demand of renewables here in the state. So it's already in our supply. But our program, our goals for these products, is to go above and beyond. Ideally with this, by buying more REX, putting it on the grid, we're cleaning the grid at the same time as creating demand. So we want the energy market to know, we want more of that. Give us more of that. So yes, of course, it's cheaper to have dirtier power. This program is actually, it's actually trying to make things a little greener. But if you want the cheapest option possible, that basic is the same electricity that you're getting from Eversource. So if that's what interests you, that would be like a fixed rate at the exact electricity you're getting from Eversource.
Now, what sources are you using for renewables that are going to replace all of the clean natural gas?
That's up to the suppliers to determine in the end.
What are they? I mean, are they solar or wind or...
We're using solar, wind, solar, wind, inorganic digestion, hydropower, too.
Yep, small hydro.
Small hydro as well.
They're all called MA Class 1 REX. That's what we use for our additional REX. But within the state standard, which we also follow in our products, there is a whole bunch of things. MA New basically just means that it's coming from renewable energy, all the things Rafida just listed, but they were projects made after 1997.
Yeah, and they're all within, sourced within the New England region, not from Texas or Iowa.
Now, how reliable are your renewables? Do they work at night?
Well, again, so the supplier is, Good Energy is not the supplier, right? And we're not, and the city is not the supplier. The suppliers are, sorry, any of your large companies that have to supply electricity to an entire grid. And that's overseen by New England ISO, among other things. They have, any supplier that's operating within that grid is subject to their oversight to make sure that the grid is up and reliable. So the mix of things that are coming to us from the supplier that we choose is already vetted within that process of, like, they're able to sell within this market. So they're not, and correct me if I'm a little bit off-base with any of this. But so again, the basic option that we would offer is the same supply that you'd be getting if you just remained an Eversource customer. Those suppliers can get some of that from natural gas. They can get some of it from other sources. The state mandates a certain amount of renewables in the mix because that's something that every supplier in the state has to do. And so what, you know, again, that standard option that we would have, the basic option we'd have, would be the same as that. These extra opt-in options for higher levels of renewables are, again, things that the supplier is able to offer. Right now, you can go out and find a supplier to offer, you know, a third-party suppliers exist already. And anybody can go find a third-party supplier. They can choose what's, to some extent, what sort of energy might be in that mix. If they want 100% renewable energy, there's a supplier that can do that for them. If they want something that's more basic, they can find that too. But nothing is going to have less than the state-mandated amount of renewables. And again, that's all vetted through the ISO and through other processes to make sure that the grid is reliable and that the lights turn on when you flick the switch.
So what percent are we looking at savings to the senior citizens on fixed income? Are they going to be paying more or paying less when you're done with this?
So again, we will go out to bid, and suppliers would offer, would offer us bids, and we would compare that against the existing Eversource rates. We would want to lock in something that's lower than the existing Eversource rates by aggregating the buying power of all residents and businesses. We are optimistic that we'd be able to find a supplier that would give us a lower rate. And again, as Eversource, every six months, they have to, they have a six-month market. They have to go back out to bid. And their, as you see, their prices tend to go up pretty considerably year over year. Something that we would be able to do is lock in a multi-year contract, maybe as many as two or three years. Three years, yes, so that would be at a rate that we know, hopefully, is already lower than where Eversource is at. So as we're going like this and Eversource is going like this, there's your savings that every customer would be able to, be able to access.
And who, who's making a decision with these third-party persons or suppliers? Is it one person or one group? I'm just looking at, you know, is it a good job to be the one in charge of getting the third-party person or supplier?
Right. Well, we would bring, go out to bid as a city. We would get those bids. They would be reviewed by my committee, I would assume. Ultimately, it's the mayor's office that would contract with, that would approve.
So the third-party supplier, so what happens is during the bidding...
I hear you.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. During the bidding process, before the bidding happens, like, we will, the city, the consultants will work with the city, you know, to choose the supplier as well. And the contracts, they will be thoroughly checked and assured by our legal counsel, who will work with the city's legal counsel to make sure that the contracts have the proper amendments. And after that, the bidding process will happen. And after that, the bidding process will happen and, you know, whichever supplier is supplier is chosen, we make sure that the contract is already like decided on and everything is already like agreed upon, both between the consultants, the city, and of course, the supplier. So that that quality assurance is something that the consultants will definitely, will be providing the city.
And I'll just say, yeah, the consultants, in this case, you know, that we've, we've chosen, they have a track record, they've worked with a lot of other municipalities around the state, they know this process inside and out, they know how to get the, you know, the best opportunities, best deals for for the cities that they work with. So they are really the first line of like, you know, first, the experts in this.
What have they saved so far for?
Okay, so I'll talk about Medford, Medford, Massachusetts. So since their inception in 2017, they have saved about $10 million through this community electricity program. There's other examples as well. From on the top of my head, I can talk about Medford. And I think each year they purchase about 6,900 megawatt hour of voluntary renewable energy, which helps them displace 5.2 million pounds of carbon dioxide, which is equivalent to kind of removing 500, you know, 500 gasoline cars. So it has been a win-win situation, both environmentally and economically, and they too, like for their standard product, offer like a 10% renewable energy, much like East Hampton's going to be offering.
So how much will we offset Chinese coal-fired power plants? Are we going to do anything or is it just spinning our wheels?
I mean, we don't control what happens in China. We're not, we won't be sourcing anything from there.
Yeah, polluting and.
They are.
No matter what we do, they're going to do more.
Well, we control what we can control. This is a, you know, for us as a municipality, where do we, what fingers can we put on what levers, right? This is one way that we.
At cost savings.
What's that?
I'm looking at cost savings.
Yeah, that's, that's our goal. And that's first and foremost, that's what I want, is to be able to save people money on their electric bill. I want to save money on my electric bill.
We can still stay with EverSource if we want.
Yes, it's an op, yeah, anyone can choose to to opt out of the program. Again, no penalty to opt in, opt out at any time, so.
Thank you.
That's how it works. Thanks very much for your, for your questions.
I I just, and I I should have mentioned this, thank you, Mr. Torrey, for prompting. The procurement process is actually, there's a quality assurance from Good Energy. There is also overview from D O E R, the Department of Energy Resources. The RFP that goes out to bid follows 30B procurement laws, the exact same ones we follow when we go out to bid for the school, when we go out to bid for a car. We have a certified procurement officer that looks over all RFPs, regardless of having the support of a consultant or the other side's attorney or whatnot. The bids are put back and they are graded in a, in a grid that the state puts forward and that usually the certified procurement officer is always one of the reviewing parties. In this case, the chair of the commission would be. And depending on what the RFP looks like, our procurement officer will suggest a third-party, I mean, a third person that has a direct connection to the city. Consultants are never a part of that rating committee, and all of the ratings of the bids we get need to be in writing. When we have gone out for energy contracting in the past, we work with consultants similar to Good Energy, and we start reviewing and and marking the, the daily price of energy and and watch the trends. And we have been very successful in, over the long term. And but the procurement process, there's a little more here because it's energy and the, the complexity of it, but it comes down to the same 30B process that the city must follow for any procurement that we're, or bid we're putting out for. So more steps, but it comes down to the same, comes down to our procurement.
Thank you. I should have, I should have left that answer to other people who have never been involved in the procurement process. I'm just trying to make it up as I go. I see there's a hand online. We do have one more person here in person to to speak, so I'm going to let them go and then we'll get to our online folks.
Yeah, John Pepe, I'm on the Energy Advisory Committee. Addressing the matter of cost savings, I just found an article recently on, from the Mass Municipal Association, which represents the 351 municipal governments around the state, on aggregation programs, reducing costs and increasing sustainability. And the numbers say that about 80% of the community choice energy or aggregation programs offer reduced electricity costs. About 60% of them are rated green, which means they have a higher percentage of renewable energy certificates than required by the Commonwealth. 30% or around 30, 35% of them are actually at 100% renewable energy. And the dollar savings, they found that 80% of the, these community choice energy electricity programs are saving 88 cents a kilowatt hour, so about $93 per household per year. A smaller percentage of them, I think it's 35%, are saving a penny a kilowatt hour, which is $106 per household. And there were a few that were saving $271 per household per year. So it gives you an idea of what the possibilities are. I don't know what happens with the other 20% that aren't saving. Either people are opting out or they're getting, they're just choosing to pay more for, as a city, for a higher, higher green package. So I thought I'd share that to answer that question.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm trying to figure out how to let this person online ask their question.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, I can.
Oh, great. Hi, everyone. I'm Kai, I'm Jockrog McQuade, resident of Precinct 5 in East Hampton, lived here my whole life. I'm super excited to see this happening on the city level. I'm definitely a proponent of green energy, and I've seen this happen in surrounding communities, and I'm very thrilled with all the hard work that you guys have put in. And I'm very happy to see the mayor speaking in support and just all the momentum around this is great to see. I guess one question I have is, I know that like Holyoke has a little bit of a different situation where they're also generating some of their own power. Is this sort of a step in that direction? I don't know what, what resources we have at East Hampton for generation, but I don't know if this helps us get to that as well. If you could just speak to that, if there's any thought put into that.
Yeah, thank you so much for your questions. So one of the key benefits of this program is that we kind of avoid the infrastructure and financial risks, unlike Holyoke. Like, while it's true that many suppliers, like, I mean, we, we're not exactly like going into that route of, you know, being that infrastructure, like, we're just going to be having another supplier, you know, supply for you guys, but we're not going to be like, like, we're not looking for East Hampton to be its own facility or anything. So we're not going to be doing that.
Yeah, there's another process that we would have to go through as a city to even potentially go down that road. And again, you do take on all the risk then of owning the infrastructure and maintenance and and things like that 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 come with, you know, being an electricity supplier. So at this point, and the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, but yeah, not, not any, any thought of like becoming, you know, having our own holyoke gas and electric type, type situation or or any sort of public, you know, utility owned by the city.
All right. Well, thank you anyway.
You're welcome. Carolyn, online, you have a question? If you can unmute yourself.
I think, did I unmute myself?
You sure did.
Yes. Okay, great. Yes, I am Carolyn Cushing. I live on Main Street. I'm really just saying thank you. I am an individual homeowner. I am concerned about the environment and just on my own researching things or, you know, it's a lot to do. And I also believe that as, you know, as a whole city, we will have a lot more buying power. I happen to work at Mass Audubon at Arcadia, and I am not involved in any of our programs working on this, but I just raised money. And I know that, you know, in 2019, hearing about it from Mass Audubon at community aggregation and doing a little research and mentioning it to my city councillor. So for, I've been watching this for many years, and I'm really grateful that it is coming to East Hampton and that that we can both, you know, have greener energy and most likely save money for, for, for all of the community. So just thank you for your hard work, and I'm very much in support of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
My name is Jack Zykowski, and I'm coming from Hadley. I don't know what the rules are here. Is it our right to share?
As far as.
All right, so we.
Yeah.
All right, and so I'm involved on the Climate Change Committee in the town of Hadley, and we've had aggregation and recently there was an open period of enrollment for the minimum price per kilowatt for the person who had the question about what's the price per kilowatt. It was about 11 cents for the base rate, and if you wanted to go with the more green, you could pay up to 14 cents per kilowatt. But either way, it was significantly less, noticeably less than what you'd be paying for EverSource. So there were, there was lots of questions and confusion in town. We, Constellation is the supplier for us, and EverSource delivers it for us, but almost everybody can save money by doing this. It's been something that's really worked well for the town. Thank you.
Great, really appreciate that input. Yeah, in comparison, I think I saw the upcoming EverSource rate that's about to go into effect was 14.8 cents kilowatt hour, I believe, something like that. And that's, that's actually coming down from the, the higher winter rates. It does tend to come down a little bit in the, in the second half of the year versus the first half of the year. But again, over time, that, you know, it'll, it'll go right back up. I think it'll be February 1st now, when they, when they reset it the next time. Was that, did I have that about right? 14.8? Okay, good. Did a little bit of homework.
You did.
Anybody else online or here in person that has a comment, a question? Carolyn, I think already asked her question, so I think.
Got one in here.
Yeah, please, come on up.
Hi, my name is Paul Cody from Manscud Drive. In the past, you know, way back, we had a solar farm set up on O'Neill Street, and I'm wondering if part of what we were doing here in saving money for the town, that was basically for the town use, right, for lights and whatever, you know, was it? So has that been successful in the past? And can we use that experience now in going forward?
You mean the solar farm? Are you talking about the one on Oliver Street?
Oliver Street, correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, yeah. Just wanted to make sure. And well, you might be able to speak to that a little bit more, more readily than I can.
Yes, that solar field has been fantastic for the city. And, and it's really a part of the revamp of how we, of how we access electricity. The solar field is high production. We just, we went through 20 years already and signed a new contract. What that allows us to do is it does take down our common lights, a little bit off of the streetlights, a lot off of our schools and this building, the real energy draws, which of course then puts us in a place where we're not going out to the grid for additional. In preparation for this, as well as an MMA program where we aggregate some of our energy, we asked EverSource and they actually agreed to give us the solar credits from that very high-producing field in cash rather than solar credits. So now we're getting checks every month, and it goes directly to, we just create this past budget year, just passed, a separate account and line item, so you can watch the money from the solar credits. I love just saying cash. It goes in there and we, it's just been fantastic because now we can obtain more credits, we have more flexibility for the city, for the residents, and we're taking down those common electricity costs. But the, that solar field has far surpassed our expectations of what it could do for the city. We'd, we'd love to, to do more. We're kind of looking at, at how to do that now, but that was a great question. I, I should have mentioned that.
Excellent.
Yeah, one other thing aggregation does potentially allow us to do is that you can have certain money that, that is part of this, that maybe would be set aside for municipal solar or other energy projects. Part of the program can also fund, like, somebody to oversee the program at the city level, a staff member for the amount of time that it takes to, to do oversight, because we will need somebody on the city payroll who is helping to manage this program sort of, sort of day to day. And the exact, I think, shape of that is still a little bit up in the air, but something that we'll be working towards as we go through the rest of the process. All right, anybody else? Anything they'd like to add? Do appreciate the wide variety of, of questions and perspectives. Appreciate those of you who are looking stuff up on the spot or bringing experience with this to us. There obviously, you know, there is a, a rich history already in the, in the Commonwealth of municipalities that are doing this. You know, we were, we are far from the first. There are others that are in, doing along with us right now, and there's a lot of, lot of history and a lot of experience out there. And Good Energy has been a great partner. Mentioned them again because they, they have done this, and not only just in Massachusetts, right? You've done, you do work in other states as well. So, so there's, you know, a lot, a lot of talent and expertise that comes along with that and, and working with this. So again, very excited to, to get to the next part of the process. Very thankful for, for all the input that we receive, both here and online. Again, the public comment period is open through July 6th. So easthamptoncommunityelectricity.com, there is a, a form there that you can submit questions or comments. And yeah, I think, again, hard copy of the, the draft of the plan is available in the city clerk's office, is also available online at the plan website. So that is the, the draft that we have now. It is not the final one that will be submitted yet, but that's, next thing we'll be working on once we get the public comment period finalized.
I think if you go maybe to the next slide.
Okay.
Just in case there's maybe outstanding questions.
Ah, okay.
This is Rafita and I's contact information that you can hang on to even through the program's launch. We'll be overseeing this directly, so you guys can take those down as well. We have direct lines as well.
Great. And yeah, this meeting is being recorded, both here and e-media has been on monitoring and recording this for us. We appreciate their, their participation and assistance with this. I want to thank the, the IT department for, for helping me figure all this stuff out today so we can get this up and running. Definitely appreciate everybody's time and, and energy going into this. That's definitely the last one?
That's definitely the last one.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Rafita. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thanks so much.
And again, we'll look forward to receiving any more comments or questions that you have, and we'll keep everybody posted on what happens next.